Good evening and welcome to the public meeting of the Halton District School Board for Wednesday, February 20, 2019. At this moment, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is video voice recorded and live streamed from the hdsb.ca website. I would also like to ask that you turn all your devices to silent mode. All the trustees are present tonight. Trustee Reynolds is on the phone. I'd also like to welcome our new Superintendent of Business Services, Superintendent Nagoy. And this evening, Trustee Collard will be honoring the land.
Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Atawateran, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful creation that exists. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you, Trustee Collard. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Seeing none. Next, we are up to the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Girretts, seconded by Trustee Amos. Hold on a second. Oops. Are there any questions, comments, anything about the agenda this evening? Okay. Okay, just to note that it says "private" on the screen, but this is for public session. So, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we are up to the Inspire Awards. Everyone in the Halton District School Board community can nominate or be nominated: families, neighbors, related organizations, staff, students, and school volunteers. The Inspire Award is given to an individual or group who is formally or informally associated with the Halton District School Board, who support our students and their achievements through exemplary caring, initiative, innovation, and creativity. Award recipients choose where they would like to receive their award, and this evening we have one Inspire Award presentation. I'd like to call Trustee Amos to the front, and I would like to call Matthew Fisher to the front. Matthew is a grade 12 student at White Oak Secondary School. He is an outstanding student who demonstrates remarkable achievement. As a peer mentor at his school, Matthew provides support to other students, many of whom have special education needs. His ability to connect and relate to students is unique. Matthew is professional, committed, and respectful in his role as a peer mentor. Students admire the knowledge Matthew provides and appreciate how he explains instructions in a way that is easy to understand. Matthew's ability to navigate the peer-mentor-mentee relationship with patience and confidence is admirable. He's a natural leader who helps facilitate a practical and meaningful learning experience for students. Congratulations, Matthew. The following Inspire Award winner has chosen to receive their award at their place of work, and that would be Catherine Richardson at CH Norton Public School. Thank you to all recipients. Please do continue to nominate people or organizations who support our students and their achievements. We accept nominations online at hdsb.ca. We do have three delegations this evening. As per our delegation bylaw, each delegation shall be allowed up to five minutes for their presentation to the board. Following each delegation, the chair will be... The chair will open the floor to the trustees for up to five minutes for questions of clarification to either the delegate or staff. And I will have a timer here. I have two now. And the first delegation, if I could please call forward, Rithika Gogia. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, come right up to the seat, and when you're doing your presentation, you need to press the button to turn on the microphone so that we can all hear, as well as Trustee Reynolds, who's on the phone. And I will give you... At four minutes, I'll give you... You have one more minute to go, okay? At the four-minute mark.
Four minutes?
At four minutes, I'll tell you you have one more minute, and then you have...
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
There are a few chairs up here, if you'd like to join her. You're welcome to start any time.
Okay. Good evening, respected trustees. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rithika Gogia, and I'm here representing Upper Oaks Community Families. Today, I'm going to start this delegation by asking you all a question. If you were to... If you were buying a house in a new community, what is the first thing you would do? I'm sure the first thing you would do is find out which school your children would be going to, and that's exactly what most of our parents did. We called up the Halton Board, and we were told, assured, that our children would be going to the new school starting in September 2019, and that River Oaks Public School was a temporary arrangement. With this assurance, we went ahead and made the biggest commitments of our lives: we bought our house. We are so shocked and disappointed to learn that our children may not be going to the new Northeast Number Two school, and that River Oaks Public School could be their home school. We understand that there are many factors involving in deciding school boundaries. Today, I'm going to put forward our perspective. Let's talk about distance. If you could please turn to page number four in our report and take a look at the map. Home school is supposed to be close to home. River Oaks Public School is six kilometers away from our community, and the new school is only two kilometers away. Just last week, we had bus cancellations, bus delays, and parents had to drop the children to school. River Oaks is being six kilometers away. It takes us 40 minutes in the morning, and I'll tell you how. Dandaz is a busy road. We take left on Sixth Line. There's another school, Holy Trinity School. It's a busy time for them. You get to River Oaks, there is no kiss and ride, very few parking spaces. By the time parents drop their children, come take Sixth Line, Dandaz, it's 40 minutes, and most of us work on the east side of the city, so it takes 40 minutes to drop our children to school. God forbid if there's an emergency, how soon can we reach our children? Schools often have walk-to-school days, bike-to-school days on warm summer days. Will our children never have an opportunity to participate? Let's talk about building a strong community. Our children should have their friends close by in the nearby communities. If River Oaks Public School was to be our home school, I stand here today and tell you that our community will be fragmented. Our children will have no common parks to share with their friends who live in River Oaks area. They will not be able to meet each other outside school easily. River Oaks Public School is already full, and now our children are being sent to... Diverted to Falgerwood School. We are scattered everywhere. As far as transition is concerned, we were aware that River Oaks is a temporary arrangement, and we were looking forward to the new school being built and that our children would have access to all the new amenities, just like the other north-of-Dandaz community children have. There are discussions of school number three, which could take up to five to seven years, and that is still not guaranteed. That is a very long time for our children to be going to a school far away. Our community is already established, and we need a home school close to home. Please, if you could turn to page number five, take a moment and look through the petition with personal comments from members of our community. This is only a portion of people we could get to. Most of our families are not even aware of what's going on. They still believe that their children are going to go to the new school in 2020. Last week, the weather was not in our favor that we could go door-to-door knocking and create awareness. When we look at all the other options, we see that communities that have not yet...
One minute. Just letting you know you have one minute.
Okay. When we look at all the other options, we see that communities that have not yet been built, houses that have not yet been sold, they have already been allotted to the new school. Why is our community ostracized? With Odenawi School being under pressure, why is our community children being thrown under the bus? Other communities are closer to River Oaks. We are the furthest from River Oaks Public School. Our children going to River Oaks Public School does not make sense logically or logistically. I stand here in front of you, representing our whole community, asking you to please keep us in mind and our inclusion in Northeast Number Two School. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very well timed. You had 10 seconds left. So now we have the opportunity for trustees to ask questions of clarification for the next five minutes. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the delegate. I'm looking at the map that you provided and where you are in terms of... Could you tell me right now which school do your children go to?
River Oaks Public School.
So they currently go to River Oaks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from trustees at all? Clarification? Thank you very much. We all received your package. We've gone through it as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next delegation is Vishal Kapoor. Could you come forward, please?
Is there a way to present it? So I was quite late in getting my presentation to Gail electronically, so I apologize. So I have paper copies, so everybody has it. Oh. Thank you. I don't know if I have enough copies, but I made about 15. Okay.
Thank you. I understand it's Rena Maru that's speaking?
Yes, I'm not Vishal. Vishal is right.
Okay.
Mine was forwarded before, but because she did the presentation, she can't present, so I'm just here to assist her.
That's excellent. Thank you for clarifying that.
Is it okay if I stand? Okay. I just have a quick question for you. Is it okay if I go over five? That's absolutely not allowed, it sounds like. Okay? So I may talk a bit fast, okay? I do need to sit. Okay. Sorry? I'm good? Okay.
Okay, you're welcome to start any time.
All right. So good evening, everybody. My name is Rena Maru, and I'm here representing 21... Sorry, 27 families, many of here who are behind me. We all have children who are currently enrolled in the French Immersion Program at Odenawi Public School. Thirty-three are currently enrolled, 18 will be future enrollments once they reach grade two. I recognize that the actual director's recommendation comes a little bit later in the evening, but the crux of their recommendation, which is Scenario 14C, looks to transfer the French Immersion Program from Odenawi to the new school and making Odenawi a single track. So the position of this delegation here tonight is to keep French immersion at Odenawi Public School. And our first point we would just like to make, we feel that the current scenario in the proposal has actually some adverse impacts on the actual FI program itself. First of all, it's going to isolate a lot of the grade seven and eight students who are going to remain at Odenawi. In fact, in 2021, only 40 out of over 1,000 students will be represented, and they represent less than 5% of the total population that will be remaining before the entire program is moved to the new school. Equally important, what we are stipulating is that this current scenario actually splits a lot of the French Immersion families. So in our delegation alone, 13 families are going to have siblings across two different schools. So what it's causing a lot of parents to do is to make the decision to pull out their kids from French immersion and put them into English track at Odenawi. Within our delegation alone, that represents 29 French Immersion enrollments. Now, for obvious reasons, I was not able to reach out to every parent of the 300 kids who attend Odenawi Public School. So if you were to extrapolate that dropout rate to the larger population, what we are saying here is that in Scenario 14C, the current projection for the Odenawi population is actually understated by almost 90 to 150 students. There are 300 students in Odenawi. Even if you assume a worst case of 30%, if 30% of students are transferred to English track, the projection that is in 14C is actually understated. Therefore, we are saying that the criteria of balancing overall enrollment is not met. So I haven't come with you... I haven't come to you with just a problem. We do have a solution or a proposal, and what we are recommending is a slightly modified scenario. We're terming it 14D. Scenario 14D is just a slight modification or a hybrid of 14C, which is the one before you by the director, as well as 11B. 11B was one of the three recommended scenarios by the BRC to the BRSC, and it was one of the options that was offered to the public during the January 10 meeting, okay? So what we are simply proposing is, rather than transfer the French Immersion program, why not keep... Take the English boundary that is currently proposed, shorten it to preserve, and take the French Immersion boundary and extend it to Trafalgar. So what that would mean was that NE2, the new school when it opens, would be a single-track English school with the same boundary as was proposed in Scenario 11B. All other schools would remain exactly the same, okay? So again, Odenawi shrink the English boundary and extend the French boundary. What we have also provided is we have used the exact data that was provided by the planning department in all the scenarios, and we've projected the populations for Odenawi and NE2 under the scenario that we are proposing. And what you will see is even under Scenario 14D, by keeping Odenawi as a French Immersion school, the utilization for Odenawi is the exact same across both scenarios, okay? At 129%. In fact, NE2 drops significantly in the outer gears. And the other point I really want to emphasize is that, given the fact that parents like myself, we will take our kids out of French immersion and put them into English track, if even 90 students do that, you are basically... The population projections for Odenawi is understated, and you have not addressed the overpopulation issue at Odenawi that's there today. Okay? That's a very critical point we want to make. The next slide, what I've done simply is, in the board, the director's report, there are many criteria that are mentioned in terms of what was very important or critical in terms of determining which scenario to pick. All I've done is compared Scenario 14D, which is the one the delegation is proposing, versus what is in the director's report against some of the key criteria. So the first on a balance of overall enrollment, we have proven to you that the director's recommendation does not meet that, given there is a high risk of French Immersion students dropping out and switching to English track. In terms of keeping siblings together, we've also shown that a lot of the French Immersion families, because of the grandfathering rules in 14C, as well as the enrollment guidelines that you can only enter French immersion at grade two, you are splitting up a lot of the French Immersion families. By keeping French immersion at Odenawi, you keep the French families together, and because we are grandfathering the English students, so any English stream student that's in grade seven or eight remains at Odenawi, and their younger siblings are also going to stay at Odenawi, so you are also keeping the English families together.
Okay. Unfortunately, you've exhausted your time. The five minutes are up, so...
But you didn't even give me my four-minute warning. Can I just finish this one slide?
No, I'm sorry. It's according to our bylaws, and so I'm unable to do that. Does anybody have any questions for the delegate?
Please ask me a question about what I was about to say.
Vice General Harrison.
Thank you. We're on the same wavelength there, so I'm wondering if you could please explain to me Items Three and Four briefly on this slide. I'm particularly interested in, and I was going to ask you anyway, what the public vote, what you mean by that.
Okay. So on following the January 10 public meeting, we were all asked to give our input using public surveys. So the online public survey, there were 251 respondents, and that is what stipulated in the director's report, but the majority of those respondents voted for Scenario 11A, which said keep French immersion at Odenawi, keep Odenawi as a dual-track school. So even the public vote was supporting keeping it at Odenawi. So my last point, which I think is the most important point, is the following. In the director's report, there is a lot of verbiage talking about the viability of the French Immersion program, okay? And I quote, it says something about by expanding the boundary, you therefore increase the viability of the program because you have higher number of students enrolled in the French immersion. But then it goes on to say that you now... It justifies why you should transfer the program from Odenawi to Northeast Number Two. And what we're saying is it refers to startup costs, that startup costs are minimal because the program is just being transferred. Well, I work in the corporate world, and in the corporate world, you can't just look at numbers, you have to look at the qualitative factors. And the biggest concern that the French Immersion parents have is that the maturity that this program has reached at Odenawi will not be matched right away once it moves to a brand-new school. It is going to take at least a couple of years, and that's one of the biggest concerns that we have. Our understanding also, and I don't know this is a fact, but what I thought I understood at the January 17 BRC from the BRSC, I thought there was no precedence either for this move, to actually transfer a French Immersion program from one dual-track to another dual-track. So given all these considerations, what we are saying is we have proven you can still make the French Immersion program viable by simply extending Odenawi's boundary without disrupting the students, without disrupting the teachers, without incurring any costs. Therefore, for us, we have proven it is also viable under our scenario, and you don't incur any additional costs. Thank you.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. I have a few questions to you, Madam Chair, to the delegates. The 14D and 14C charts, they're in here twice. Can I assume that they're the exact same chart?
They're exact same. So I just put them because they were larger, so the backup slides have all the larger print for you guys.
Thank you for the larger print, and thank you also for not just coming and saying we don't like it, but with coming up with a solution to look at. I do sincerely appreciate that. I don't know where we're ended up, but I do appreciate... My second question, were any of the Odenawi FI parents on the BRC?
Yes.
Yes, that's why I'm sitting over here, and I wasn't a part of the BRC. Yes, my name is Vishal Kapoor, and I was part of BRC as a French Immersion parent, and that's why I'm here, to support and giving them how the process went, how we got the feedback. And my disappointment once, the whole thing, was like we've been told when we came on the 11A first time that it won't be approved by the trustees. That's the reason was given by the planning department, which was not acceptable to us because if that was the case, we shouldn't put that scenario in front of us anyway. Second thing, it happened, so like after that, we eliminated...
Clarification, I didn't hear which scenario that was you were referring to.
That was 11A. So after that, like when it got eliminated, and we said not the French Immersion, when we did the public meeting, we got the survey done, and public speaking, spoken to the same thing which I was mentioning in the BRC meeting, and they come out with that. And in the last meeting, we decided that's 11B, which is a hybrid of 11A, that will be implemented, and majority of them that said that, even the survey said that. So I was pretty disappointed when the director's report came out, giving all that verbiage and throwing all that public opinion aside. So that was my disappointment. That's why I'm here to support this, and we're coming out the solution because I'm a Realtor as well, and the lady before us, she mentioned the same thing. Lot of parents and lot of families moved over there because Odenawi is established school, French immersion, and right now is a higher ranking as well, top-five school. Nobody wants to change that. Nobody wants to do... They don't know the new school, how it's going to be, what's the ranking, it's take like a year or two or three years, you guys know better how long to achieve that. How much impact is going to make, not only that side you're looking on to, but people, individual financial investment which they have done, between buying the property, they also getting impacted with time because their property is not going to increase what they're supposed to increase.
Okay, before we can... I see there's people in the speakers list. Our bylaws say that we only have five minutes of questions, so we would have to have a motion to extend this conversation, and we would have to have it passed by two-thirds. So, Trustee Collard, you putting that motion forward, seconded by Trustee Shuttleworth. Is there... Hold on a second before you do anything. Is there any debate at all on this, on actually extending this? Is that what you'd like to say? You'd like to amend it to five minutes? Okay, five more minutes. Okay, so...
Point of clarification, so the motion is to extend the debate by five minutes?
By five.
So that the gallery is aware that there's only another five minutes for any questions asked?
Yes. For this delegation, yes. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, so that passes unanimously. We can go forward, but please, we only have five minutes, so please keep questions and answers very concise so we can get through as much information as possible. While I go back to the original list. Okay, Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you to the delegate. I just wanted to let you know that in your paper package, you've duplicated 14C and labeled it as 14D, second last page, just so that you know that it's not showing 14D in the package on that page. It is showing 14C again. But my question was how you came to the conclusion that your numbers in 14D would in fact be accurate without access to the planning software? I would... I'm not doubting you, I just want to know how you got these numbers.
Absolutely. So I would definitely want them to re-verify the numbers, but all we did was we basically, because we were only going to look at 11B versus 14C, we just assumed of the French Immersion population that was sitting in NE2 in under 14C, we moved that French Immersion population to 14D. I'm a CPA, and I still get confused with all these numbers, okay? So we just moved them to 14D, and basically the delta between 11B and 14C for the NE2 English is how we didn't determine it. So it can be verified. I obviously did not have time to go through the detailed planning data, but I took the existing software, the existing scenarios.
The issue with having done that is that attrition was considered in moving the program. So it would actually have been a higher number of students that would stay at Odenawi because they did factor in attrition from the French immersion program by moving it.
When we asked that question, so when we were present at the last BRC meeting on January seventeen, what I heard the planning department say was that they take into account normal attrition, et cetera. But I am saying that you're going to have, so none of the parents who are saying they're going to pull out, if I have a choice, I do not want to pull my children out of French immersion, I want them to stay. I do not believe that the function of parents choosing to pull their kids out because the school is now being converted to a single track was taken into account. What we were told on that day was that normal dropout rate was considered when the projections were made.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. To the delegation, I appreciate your situation. Boundary reviews are never easy, particularly when they pertain to your home school. And I thank you for looking so carefully at all of these scenarios and actually coming up with a recommendation. I have a point of clarification. Odenawi is currently a walk-to-school. You're proposing shrinking the English track boundary while expanding the French immersion boundary. Would that then not require the busing of English track students who can currently walk to their home school and busing them away?
So I would assume that you have to now bus more English kids to NE two, but I would assume the same was happening on the other scenario. So for a lot of the French immersion students under the current scenario, would have had to be, have to be bussed out to NE two as well. Majority of our parents are living right literally across from the school. So to me, I think the busing is most likely going to be neutral under both scenarios. And I recognize that by shrinking the English boundary, we are, you know, forcing the English students to actually having to go to NE two. But when you look at that boundary, they're almost equidistant from Odenawi as well as NE two. And because of the grandfathering rules for the students who are in Odenawi today, grade sevens and eights, the proposal says they can stay at Odenawi as well as their siblings.
Okay, thank you. There are no more speakers on the speakers list. Thank you very much for your delegation. Okay, I'd like to please call up Cynthia Sue.
There will be a popcorn for me, right? Sorry.
What is this?
Thank you very much. As you've heard previously, you have five minutes to give your delegation. At the one-minute mark, I'll let you know. And then after that, there'll be five minutes for questions of clarifications from the trustee.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Thank you very much for providing me this opportunity. My name is Cynthia. So for the past months, since the January tenth, we've been actively communicating with you our thoughts, our preferences to all of you. So the most popular feedback we received as to why Upper Oak Community stays in River Oak is that when Number Three School on the agenda, we will be moved to Number Three School possibly. And based on the board report, Number Three School is projected to open in September twenty twenty-first, twenty-one, or later date. Today, I'm here to show you our analysis and the forecast that Number Three School won't be open until five to seven years later. And second of all, Number Three School won't be meant for the families in the Upper Oak Community in the established area, which is East Truffaga, North Dundas, and West East Line. So that will come to our conclusion for our preferred scenarios for sixteen and seventeen. So for the timeline, based on the timeline for Number Two School, it took more than five years from the time in July twenty fifteen, from submission of the capital request to the projected opening to public in September twenty twenty. And that is the time it took when the real estate market is really hot. And currently, all real estate development slowed down. So even the best scenario, the capital request for Number Three School will be submitted in this year, it's still going to take more than five years. So this is very unfair for our community. And timeline aside, I want to show you while establishing Upper Oak Community be part of Number Three. So this is a map based on the fourteen C, but with added Number Three, Number Four, and Number Five based on a long-term accommodation plan. And just visually, you can see our community in the middle area, that is, for the distance standpoint, is closer to Number Two School than the Number Three School. And second of all, based on the real estate development plan, there will be almost thirteen hundred units in this area surrounding the Number Three School. So by the time we're looking at Number Three School, there won't be enough room for the families in the West East Line. So I think at that time, we will probably be pushed to wait for Number Four School. That's another five to seven years. That's fifteen years. It's extremely unfair for our community, for our kids, to wait for almost more than decades to a school close to home. And another concern is our community in the East Truffaga-West East Line is part of Ward Seven, and East East Line is a part of Ward Six. So the concern is who, which trustee will be managing for Number Three School? Because Ward Seven and Ward Five is under Mr. Cali Amos, and Three and Four is under Kanya Rocha, yes. So this is another concern. And that's come to our conclusion why we support Scenario Sixteen. And also for the other delegations just mentioned, Scenario Sixteen also support Odenawi for dual-track. And this is also meet that criteria. And in the board report, we have, the board report states another concern said Scenario Sixteen are result in unnecessary move for students. And I'm here to address this issue. Currently, you know, looking at the long-term map with Number One, Number Two, and to Number Five.
One minute.
Right. The students for current based on fourteen C are being rerouted to Number Two School. And for us, staying River Oak, waiting for Number Three. So by the time we have Number Three, we'll be moving to Number Three. Then later on, when you look at the Number Five, that's a permanent solution for the students in North Odenawi. So that's a permanent solution, then they eventually will have to move from Number Two School to Number Five. So that's four moves. Then eventually, we will be moving to, from Number Three School to Number Two School. That's four moves. But Scenario Sixteen, once we permanently move to Number Two School, it's only three moves. So which one will, you know, have the less, sorry, will be the least students of moves? And to address another concern about utilization, from the distance standpoint, I think, you know, for the East Odenawi session will be probably easier to move River Oak instead of us.
Okay, thank you. Your five minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're taking any questions from the trustees. Trustee Daniel Lee.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, to the delegate. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. Could you tell me, because unfortunately, I don't have maps in here for some of the things, where your children are now and where you would like them, where they're proposed to go, and where would you like them to go? I want to make sure that I'm clear on that, please.
Sorry, can you please?
Where are your children now, where are they proposed to go, and where are you suggesting that they go?
Right.
To make sure I understand.
Currently, my child went to, have to go to River Oak. All of our community have to go to River Oak. We propose to go to Number Two School, yeah.
So, but under the director's recommendation, do your children remain at River Oak, or do they go to Number Two?
They remain at River Oaks.
Remain at River Oak, yeah.
And they said we will have Number Three for us.
So we've been told.
Thank you for that clarification, making me understand. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. So just sort of following up on trustee Daniel Lee's question. You're currently at River Oaks, and you are bused to River Oaks?
Yes.
If you were to go to the new school, would you be able to walk?
Nice weather, yes.
So are there, I'm just, what, sorry, if I can sort of follow up on that. With that, so you're saying the older children can walk. So are there safety concerns in being able to walk to the school? Like, are there roads that make it difficult for younger children to cross? That would still require them having to have transportation to school versus walking to school?
But it will be more parents willing to drive to Number Two School.
But that still, would still be congestion on the road? So what I'm asking is, by moving to the school, the Number Two School, would that put you into a walk-to-school position?
So we will be...
Two kilometers.
Trustee Shuttleworth, I think we might want to ask staff what our actual practice is with regards to...
Thank you.
Through your chair, events, to trustee Shuttleworth and the delegates. Those houses are two kilometers away from Odenawi, so they would be still, they would still be eligible for busing. Whether they choose to take the busing or not is their choice, but they would be eligible for busing. And so they would be bused. Yeah, but there's still the distance anyway. They're two K away.
But for the Number Three, we will have three kilometers away. We will definitely, we need a bus for the Number Three in the long term.
Okay, well, there are no more questions of clarification from the trustees. Thank you very much for your delegation. Thank you. And I'd like to thank the delegations that spoke this evening. It's important for trustees to hear the voice of the community, and it is no small task to place yourself in the intimidating position of addressing the board as well as have your presentation broadcast and video voice recorded. Thank you for your voice, bringing your voice to the table. Now we are going to move on to presentations this evening. I'd like to welcome superintendent Trufan and principal Barnes. And please introduce your other staff. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees and senior staff. It's our pleasure to be here this evening. I would like to introduce my two people at the front table here. Dean Barnes is our Welcome Center principal, who oversees our Welcome Center in our international fee-paying students. And it's our pleasure to welcome also Alexis Stephen, who is our program lead settlement for kindergarten to grade twelve for the Halton School Board, and specifically our Welcome Center. This is our annual presentation that we are doing for the trustees this evening on the Welcome Center. Previous years, we focused on a number of different things. We've highlighted some promotional videos that we've done for the Welcome Center. We've highlighted our international fee-paying students. We are going to do all of that tonight. However, we are going to pay particular focus on our newcomers and how, in my opinion, we do a phenomenal job of welcoming our newcomers to the Halton School Board. So really, it is Dean and Alexis who's going to be doing most of the present this evening, so I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, everyone. On the first slide, it's so great to see everyone. The first slide here, we're just going to be highlighting that the Welcome Center mission, as you know, aligns with the school board mission. So we're very welcoming, accessible to all families who transition to their school community and visit us up in the Welcome Center up in Milton. And the next slide, we're really proud as a Halton board that you'll see on the map, that's a representation of all the many students who come to Halton from many parts of the world. And in fact, this is a snapshot of December two thousand and eighteen. There are a few small areas in gray, which we actually have had students from those parts of the world, but this is a snapshot of the many places. So there's actually over a hundred and sixty-five countries. And if you took a five-year snapshot, there'd be a hundred and ninety countries represented from Halton. So the next slide shows the registrations that are done at the Welcome Center. So you can see historically, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, there's a thousand and thirty-two students. And if you work your way down to this year, the asterisk represents just up until December. So we've actually registered as many students up till December this year as all of last year.
We thought it would also be helpful just to share with you what we're doing at the Welcome Center on a day-to-day basis. So first and foremost, we are registering, assessing, and providing settlement to our newcomer students and families. In addition to that, in partnership with HMC Connections, we're also providing interpretation support to all of our families where English is a second language. This is something that is system-wide and that is accessible to all of our staff, and they can book it through a Google form, making a request for anything from parent-teacher meetings to school team meetings to got-in sessions with the students. We also have cultural brokers, and these are unique interpreters who also have a cultural understanding and can make a cultural connection with our students. So where we have students who are maybe having some challenges in transitioning into their day-to-day school routines, we may have a cultural broker come in who is also from the same country of origin, who can maybe help to explain to both teacher and student, you know, where there might be a difference in understanding about classroom routines or expectations. We also offer information sessions, and those are done with the teacher and youth settlement specialists in partnership. And the information sessions are typically offered in the classes or in the school setting. And they would be anything from offering information on appropriate winter clothing to how to set up for paying for field trips or other special events online. We also offer field trips at the Welcome Center. We have had a booming, three big groups come in. We actually had a group of two-grade-six, seven classes come in from one of our elementary schools just this week. And so it's really great because we do try to make a tie with the curriculum as best as possible while still also introducing them to what we do at the Welcome Center. We also have a dual-language library where students can access through inter-office mails. We work with teachers through inter-office mail to send books that are both in the student's first language as well as their English language. And last but not least, we have a boutique at the Welcome Center that is offered to any families that may express a need. We actually, during the field trip this week, we had a group of students who were claiming, they thought that the boutique was so well-kept. and they couldn't believe how nice the clothes were. And I just wanted to thank the many trustees who have been very supportive of the Welcome Center boutique and who have supported us through their donations. Also, we do offer laptops. We have had some donations of laptops, which we work with our youth settlement team to provide to the families that would most need or most benefit from the laptops. We also just wanted to share two new initiatives that we're doing to increase student engagement for our new, new-to-Canada students, so less than five years, as well as our international students. We've reinvested some of the international program funds to support students in, in engaging through sport, through sport activity and literacy opportunities. So that's been in partnership with Gary Allen and the YMCA. As well as we put out an engagement opportunity to all of our ESL teachers where they could put in a proposal and receive a $500 subsidy towards any projects that they thought would further engage their students who are new to Canada and, and/or international students. And some of the things that came back were Camp Nanitu, Mountsburg Conservation Area, Crawford Lake, and Blue Mountains ski trip.
So I handed out to you a newsletter. It's a newsletter for their International Student Program. We're really proud of the work that we've done over the years since 2010. And you'll see the slide above you shows our gradual but responsible growth. We opened up our registration portal this year and closed it within 48 hours. There's lots of demand to study in Halton. So as I said, we managed our, our growth very responsibly. We have a social worker now. We have an itinerary teacher. We've been focusing on increasing the diversity of students from many parts of the world to enhance the global experiences of our students. The vast majority of our students are in Oakville schools, and we have a capped enrollment for each of the international students at our schools. And this year, we had a few projects on the, on the go. We were able to have professional learning sharing with a delegation from Henzoey Province, China. And they visited a number of our elementary and secondary schools. And there's really good sharing experiences about the learning that went on in Halton.
This slide speaks to a couple of goals that we identified about three or four years ago for our international fee-paying students, insurance and home stays. All of our fee-paying students who come to Halton now have insurance through the Halton School Board. It's through a vendor, but we know the kids that come to us have insurance, and they have insurance for as long as they stay with us. So if it's one year, two years, three years, it is with a very reputable healthcare provider that gives tremendous benefits to, to our students in case they need healthcare. They also have a 24-hour hotline support for mental health that they offer as well. And then the second one, just most recently in January, we completed a home state, a request for proposal, a home state provider. And this was a joint proposal with the Halton Catholic District School Board. And we've identified Canada Home State Network, which is one of the largest home state networks in the world. They deal with thousands of kids. And any student who does come to us without a family member, and that's high school only, that wouldn't have a close family member here, they go through the Canada Home State Network. And the families that apply to Canada Home State Network, apply to be a home state, they go through a vetting process, criminal record background checks. Canada Home States vet the homes. They do home visits. They interview the families just to make sure that the, the families that are taking in kids are, are appropriate. And we're pretty proud of that accomplishment, and that's going to be starting September 2019. So any student who is studying here that requires a home state, they need to go through Canada Home State. And final slide, we'll get to Dean.
Yeah, last slide, we'd really much enjoy if you could come up and see us at the Welcome Center. It's Old East Street High School on Wednesday, February 27th. It's a good day to be there. Lots of families will be coming through, so we certainly hope you'll be able to join us.
And we'd be happy to take any questions if there are any. Thank you very much.
There are some questions. So we're going to start with trustee Daniele.
Thank you. So very, very pleased to have this in our backyard in Milton. And the work that you do is absolutely incredible. Thank you. I want to go back to the fourth slide you shared with the bar graphs, where it shows that in 2018, 2019, you had the same, just in those few months until December, those six months, you had the same amount of students come in as in all of the year beforehand. I'm very curious, how much staff do you have? And how do you manage that kind of rapid uptake?
We have the administrative staff. We actually have four settlement workers. And we, we recently added the two of the workers last year. They've been really helpful. In addition to that, I mentioned a social worker and two English assessors and math assessors on staff. It's, it's quite a bit of juggling. It's a lot of communication, a lot of coordination. It's gotten better and better each year.
Okay, trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to just say thank you very much. We often drop in to the Welcome Center, the cadre of the Northern Trustees, after we depart from the FOS meetings at the center. And we, when we drop in, we're always made to feel extremely welcomed. You're so kind to answer all of our questions, and we're always impressed. I know trustee Jarrett and Daniele and myself are always impressed with this, the vast amount of work that's getting done and the, the welcome that these students are getting and that, that great start that they're getting when they come to the Halton Board. I just wanted to put, again, as your last slide has welcomed all the other trustees to come up and visit. It's very, very well worth your time to take, to go up and visit. If not on that day, any other day that you're in the area. Because it's just amazing the work that's being done in the center. And I congratulate everyone involved with that. Thank you.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair to our presenters, congratulations on the wonderful work that you do. I know that as an ESL student who moved to Canada at the age of 12, my family would have greatly benefited from such a Welcome Center, particularly as we were the only immigrant family in a very small town of Orillia at the time. So that's, that's wonderful that our students are supported so well. I just have a point of clarification. The Canada Home State Network, are we part of that now or is that going to happen soon?
Through the chair to trustee Oliver, it asks, we are in the middle of the contract signing right now. But it was an RFP process that started in the fall and ended in December, January. So we are jointly working with the Halton Catholic on, on the contract works right now.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. With the number of families that you're serving now on an annual basis, I'm wondering if there are any thoughts to expand to a second site. I know that there are a number of new Canadians in the Burlington, Oakville area as well. And I'm wondering if a secondary site in the south might be warranted or if there's enough space and ease of access where you are.
Thank you. Through your chair to trustee Collard. I, I would say right now, we are doing, the, the Welcome Center is doing a great job accommodating families from Burlington, Oakville. We, we offer any type of support that we can, whether we go to them or we facilitate them coming to us through caps or drivers. So we are able to facilitate that right now, and, and I know you've been to the Welcome Center. So, you know, with, with the welcoming room and assessment room and the boutique, could it be replicated? Yes, with, but with resources. So we, we do try to get the families up to the Welcome Center because that's where all the resources are, social worker, our settlement workers. We do our best to accommodate families who need to get up there.
Thank you. Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thanks for all of the information and the great work that's going on. If community members or school councils wanted to support the Welcome Center in terms of the boutique, and I know some technology has come forward through community members that's been refurbished and been useful to the families that come through the center, what is most needed at this point in time? Could you give some direction in that regard?
Always as we approach the winter months, so any winter gear is always appreciated. When we get ready for the back to school, I would say school supplies and backpacks are, are a big need at that point.
Thank you. And we have a family of schools meeting tomorrow night. So I'll pass that information along, and maybe my colleagues would do the same when you're meeting with your school communities. Thanks.
Thank you. And Director Miller wanted to say something.
Through your chair, Greg Benz, to our presenters this evening and all trustees. I think the Welcome Center is one of the things that we should be most proud of in this board. I mean, we've got many, many things to be proud of. But the Welcome Center is a fantastic vehicle to welcome particularly children, but also families who are new to this country. And I think both Principal Barnes and Alexis downplayed the role they play in supporting kids who are new to the country, may not be able to speak English, are anxious, some of whom are refugees and have experienced profound trauma from where they're coming from. And our board is looking after those kids as best we can at the Welcome Center. And I think you've seen by the affability of our presenters this evening why they, our, our students do feel welcome. So I want to thank all of you for that and thank the Board of Trustees for supporting the Welcome Center. It came out of a, an idea a few years ago, and it's come to fruition to be an extremely successful vehicle to support kids brand-new here. So thank you.
Thank you.
And you, okay, hold on a second. Vice Chair Al Harrison has something else to say.
So sorry, it's just another question through you, Madam Chair, and that is, do other boards have these centers? And do you network and collaborate or help to diffuse the, the knowledge that you've gained over the last few years?
Yeah, there's, there's, most school districts have variation. We're kind of unique because we combine our Welcome Center plus our International Student Program. So it's actually very good that things are amalgamated that way. Our settlement workers also attend monthly meetings as part of a network with the P.O. Halton Association. So there's lots of really good networking that goes on between provincial and also even the federal levels.
Okay, so I'd like to thank superintendent Trufan, Principal Barnes, and Ms. Stephen for your presentation this evening. The Welcome Center is a vital link for newcomers to access Halton District School Board educational services as well as supports within the broader community. And the increased numbers can be interpreted both as a sign that our region is growing exponentially with people of various cultures and languages, but also an indication of the growing reputation that, of the Welcome Center in the area. Please convey our appreciation to the rest of the staff at the Welcome Center. Okay, so next we are up to our consent agenda items. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor, and if anybody wants to pull any reports, please let me know. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the consent agenda action items and receive the information items for February 20th, 2019. Moved by trustee Amos, seconded by, oh, trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion at all on any of the items, or would you like to pull any items? Seeing none. All those in favor. So trustee Daniele is out of the room right now, so I'm going to end voting. That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. We are now up to ratification action items. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Al Harrison, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
No, we don't, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Well, just when I thought I had it. I stand by my response. I sit by my response.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so we have one action item for this evening, and I will need to pass the gavel to Vice Chair Al Harrison as it's my report.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're moving on then to item 4.2.1, Board Transportation Policy. That's report 19017 on page 28 of your board package. And I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the transportation policy as appended to report 1907. Is there a mover for that? Trustee Rocha, thank you very much. And a seconder, trustee Amos, thank you very much. And Chair Greg Benz, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you very much. Upon review, we found some further minor changes to the policy. So I'm just going to note those for the record. So on the policy statement, the second line, we reference "parents share in the", and our format usually recognizes parents and guardians, so we're adjusting that. And it also mirrors the parent guardian reference in item five. In item one, the term "board-approved programs" is used. All of our programs are actually board-approved. We wouldn't have programs that aren't board-approved. So we're suggesting the clarification of people, pupils who, because of distance from school, enrollment in programs approved for transportation hazardous walking conditions. So, and then finally, in item four, there was an issue with autocorrect, which changed the numbering of HSTS policy. So there's an autocorrect that HS turns into high school, which isn't the case when it's HSTS. So it should read by HSTS Operating Guidelines, HS 3-014, Process for Appealing Decisions. So I hope, if, if anybody has any questions about that, please go ahead and ask.
Okay, let's check out the speakers list here. Seeing no speakers. Anyone going once? Okay. So I will set the topic, and it's ready for your vote. Great, okay, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I will save and end that and pass the gavel back to Chair Greg Benz.
Thank you. We're up to communications to the board. So first off is item number five. One, student trustee reports. Trustee Clark and Meng, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I'm just going to touch briefly on our Student Senate meeting last night. So we held our sixth Student Senate meeting of this year, which ran from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We had an extended joint session for debate on the Student Senate policy, which is discussed at the previous committee of the whole meeting, as well as the voting system and the student trustees' policy. And we just wanted to thank Chair Greg Benz and trustees Oliver for coming out and attending the meeting last night. And we always encourage all trustees to come out to our Student Senate meetings. And some exciting news came out of this meeting. The Student Senate voted unanimously to approve the draft for the Student Senate policy with the intent of the trustees to bring it forward to the Board of Trustees for consultation. So we're very happy with that, and we just want to congratulate the Student Senate for such hard work and dedication to this. It wasn't an easy task for all of us to get through, and we're very happy that the Student Senators stuck with it because we have something that we're ready to work with the Board of Trustees with. Okay, now pass it over to trustee Meng.
All right, thank you, trustee Clark. So the next Student Senate meeting will be on March 6th, normal time, 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And the majority of the time will be spent on reviewing the voting system and the best voting system that will be used for the student leadership policy. And this is a very important process because it's the last opportunity that trustees Clark and I can, can receive feedback from the Student Senators regarding not only the student leadership policy, but as well as the Student Senate policy. And once the drafts have been passed by the Student Senate, it, it will be presented to a future board meeting. And hopefully, at that point, further discussions can be made. And finally, just to end things off, trustee Clark and I will be going to the Ontario Student Trustee Association's Board Council Conference, which is starting tomorrow in Ottawa. So that should be very fun for both of us. And it will be, there will be lots of professional development for all the student trustees. Does anyone have any questions?
Seeing no questions. I just want to say that I really found, I found the meeting last night very interesting. And I look forward to seeing the policy. and I look forward to seeing the policy come forward so we can, well, bring it forward for the public. Okay? So we are now up to action items for March the 6th. We have two action items. The first is number 521, Northeast Oakville Number Two Boundary Study, report 19024 on page 23 of the board package. Welcome superintendents Pennyfather and Ruddock. And the floor will be yours as soon as the technology is ready.
Through the chair to trustees. Superintendent Pennyfather, GM Ranzella, and Lorraine Choi are, and I are pleased to share with you the overview of Northeast Oakville Number Two Boundary Review. The agenda is there for you to see. We will walk through the recommendation with you this evening, give you some background information, the process of the boundary review. The scenarios recommended by the BRC are in the slide deck. However, in the interest of time, we won't be speaking to those tonight. We will, however, speak to the recommended scenario and the rationale for that recommended As you know, on September 19th, 2018, trustees approved a motion to initiate a boundary review for Northeast Oakville Number Two. As a result, we have the recommendation before you this evening. Given the circumstances we find ourselves in with the earlier delay in the ministry approval for the funding of the new school, I'm happy to say, though, it is now approved, and we are planning for an opening of September 2020. The boundary review is complete, completed a year and a half in advance, and so we are recommending a partial implementation for September 2019 to address some of the enrollment pressures at Odenawi, but primarily to eliminate an unnecessary transition for some students. We'll be recommending a full implementation in September 2020 with the opening of Northeast Oakville Number Two. And we'll speak more about the details of the recommended scenario, scenario 14C, and the implementation of those boundaries a little later in this presentation. You have there a location of the schools in the study. That's a map of North Oakville. You can see Odenawi, Post Corners, River Oaks, Sunningdale, and Muns, as well as the location for Oakville Northeast Number Two, and a plan for four additional schools to be built over time in North Oakville. I would like to draw your attention to the location of Northeast Number Three, as that will be referenced in this presentation as well. These maps are our current school boundaries. On the left, you can see the boundaries for the school, the schools in the study for English Track, that's Odenawi, Post Corners, and River Oaks. And on the right are the boundaries for French Immersion, Odenawi, Sunningdale, and Muns. And you can also see the location of Northeast Number Two in relation to these school boundaries. This chart gives you information about our current enrollment at those, these schools. And to assist you with your interpretation of this chart, gray indicates that a school is under its OTG, that's its occupancy on the ground, or in other words, in the building. And the percentage below shows us the percentage of the utilization of that school. Sunningdale, as you can see, is within its OTG, and it's currently at 84% utilization, and therefore does not need portables. Yellow indicates that a school is over its OTG but managing with portables. So it's still within what we call the total OTG, that's building and portables combined. The percentage will read over 100% because it's over its total use of the building. Muns and Post Corners are both over its OTG but managing with portables. Red indicates that the school population is over its total OTG, so it's reached its capacity in the building and with the maximum number of portables on site. As you can see, both Odenawi and River Oaks are in the red. Both of those schools are currently closed for new registrations, and we are redirecting students to Folgerwood and Palermo. We are showing all of the students that belong to those communities in those schools so that it reminds us that even though they are in Palermo and Folgerwood, they do belong to those school communities. And now I'll turn it over to Superintendent Pennyfather.
Regarding the composition of the Boundary Review Committee, we have five schools were invited to select two parent representatives, a council chair or designated, and one other, and also the BRC members, who you can see up on the right. Process was co-chaired by myself and trustee Collard, out-of-area trustee. The planning department, the school SO, Oakville trustees participated in the BRC also. Director Miller also attended one of the BRC meetings in December 2018. I would like to take this opportunity to thank those who participated in the Boundary Review process, the parent representatives from each school who attended the meetings and provided input into each scenario, the planning department for their expertise in creating the maps and generating the enrollment for each scenario, and as well their deep knowledge about anticipated developments and timing of these developments. And thanks also to the trustees, my co-chair trustee Collard, who facilitated the BRC meetings with me, and trustees Amos and Oliver for their participation in the BRC and BRSC meetings. The Boundary Review process began in October 2018. The BRC met five times over the span of three months. More in a moment about the process followed through those meetings. As well, the board hosted a public information meeting in January. We shared four scenarios developed and recommended by the BRC and collected community feedback on the four scenarios. At this stage of the process, we're here to share the final report and the director's recommendation this evening. On March 6th, the Board of Trustees will vote on the director's recommendation. Throughout, throughout the BRC, there was consistent communication with communities. There was direct email for announcements. There was board website was updated after each meeting, including meeting notes, scenarios, and a running Q&amp;A for all questions that were directed to the board. There were media releases and social media. There was feedback survey after the public meeting, to the, there was a feedback survey after the public meeting, which was presented back to the BRC, the results of which, and we replied to email any questions or comments that were sent in to us. The role of the BRC is to formulate scenarios over the series of meetings and make two sets of recommendations. The first recommendation, the four scenarios to take to the public information meeting for community feedback. The second recommendation, two to three scenarios to recommend to the BRSC for consideration. The BRSC considers the recommendations of the BRC and then makes a recommendation to the director. The director recommends a scenario to the Board of Trustees. That is the purpose of this presentation to share with you this evening. The decision on the boundary rests with the trustees. The vote at the board meeting will occur on March 6th. At the first BRC meeting, there was a discussion on the evaluation criteria for the BRC. The BRC expressed their priorities. They were student experience, specifically avoiding students changing schools more than absolutely necessary, program viability, and the balance of overall enrollment. Over the course of the meetings and discussions, the BRC also identified keeping families together as a priority, resulting in grandparenting clauses in scenarios. We'll explain grandparenting in more detail. The BRC was provided with four initial scenarios generated by the BRSC. Over the five meetings, we discussed the ideas, the pros, the cons, and explored other possibilities and suggested new scenarios. By the end, they had reviewed or generated 20 scenarios. Using their criteria narrowed to four scenarios for the public information meeting. Scenarios 11A, 14A, 14B, and 15, linked to this presentation, were presented, and community feedback was collected on those scenarios following the public information Regarding grandparenting, typically when a school boundary changes, effective students change schools. Grandparenting is a decision to allow existing students of a specific grade or grades in a neighborhood or geographic area to remain at their current school until they complete a particular grade at that school. Students being grandparented are provided transportation subject to the HDSP transportation policies. Siblings of students that have been grandparented will be directed, unless otherwise stated, to the designated school as per the new approved school boundary. You will hear in this Boundary Review that special consideration was made for siblings of students being grandparented. Students preferring not to be grandparented may apply for optional attendance as per the board's administrative procedure. Historically, the Halton District School Board has made an effort to grandparents students in their graduating year. This is why we typically open a school K to seven. At the last BRC meeting, we reviewed the feedback from the themes that emerged from the feedback survey from the public meeting. The themes that emerged were busing time, school proximity, particularly for families living east of Trafalgar Road and north of Dundas Street. We heard they would prefer to move to Number Two than Number Three rather than remain at River Oaks. Regarding French Immersion, parents were split, some wanting to move to Sunningdale or Muns, some wanting two FI schools north of Dundas Street, and some Odenawi FI parents want Odenawi to remain a dual-track school. There was a preference of keeping cohorts of students together over reducing the number of portables at a school. Most preferred scenario by the respondents was 11A, with the majority of respondents indicating their child was either currently in or will be enrolled in FI. Interestingly, all four scenarios were almost equally disliked in the feedback we received. The BRC reviewed the community feedback in the fifth and final meeting. They were tasked with making a recommendation of two to three scenarios for the BRSC to consider. Using the community feedback and discussions, they adjusted some scenarios and made a final recommendation of three scenarios to the BRSC, 11B, 16, and 17. Descriptions of these scenarios are in the report and in your slides for your information. Superintendent Ruddock will now walk you through the BRSC recommended scenario and the director's recommendation to the trustees.
So how did we arrive at the recommendation that's before you this evening? So Superintendent Pennyfather mentioned, the BRC recommended four scenarios for the public information evening, 11A, 14A, 14B, and 15. These were determined to be the scenarios that best met the criteria at that point in the process. The last BRC meeting reviewed the community feedback and formed new scenarios as a result. Those are 11B, 16, and 17. And those became the BRC's recommendations to the BRSC. Following that final BRC meeting, the BRSC met to review the recommended scenarios. The BRSC revisited each recommended scenario along with how they met or did not meet the criteria set out by the BRC as a priority. Given each of the BRC recommended scenarios did not meet their criteria in one way or another, the BRSC also revisited the scenarios recommended for the public information evening. The BRSC determined that a hybrid of two BRC recommended scenarios would best meet the BRC criteria, that being scenario 14B, a BRC recommendation for the public information evening, and scenario 17, a BRC final recommendation to the BRSC. The hybrid of these two scenarios is called 14C. So the BRSC were recommended to the director, scenario 14C. Allow me to walk you through that scenario. So in scenario 14C, Oakville Northeast Number Two opens as a dual-track school. For the English Track, it opens in 202021 as a K to seven school, and in 202122, it grows to a K to eight school. The English Boundary encompasses the area enclosed by Dundas, Trafalgar, Burnhamthorpe, and Sixth Line. And looking at the map of numbered areas, this is Area 7. It also includes part of the, what we call the Odenawi Curve, that's the area north of Ironside Drive, Area 3 on the numbered map, and an area north of Odenawi, Area 2. This is a very late-phase development, and we do not anticipate any home closings in this area until 2023 at the very earliest. And as you will see, as you saw in an earlier map, we do have a school going into that area. Both of these areas would likely require transportation to Northeast Number Two. For French Immersion, the school opens as a Grade 2 to 6 in 202021. The program expands by one grade each year, adding Grade 7 in 2122 and Grade 8 in 2223. The Boundary is all north of Dundas, south of Burnhamthorpe, east of Neogawa, and west of Trafalgar. Those are Areas 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7 on the map. The French Immersion students would move as a cohort from Odenawi. The reason for this recommendation is that it gives a larger Boundary for the Oakville Northeast Number Two French Immersion Program, creating a more viable program with a greater number of students in that program, and you'll see those numbers in a moment. French Immersion students in some parts of the French Immersion Boundary will require transportation. Currently, we do transport students west across Sixth Line to Odenawi for French Immersion. In this scenario, it reverses that, and students would travel east across Sixth Line to Northeast Number Two. For some students who currently walk to Odenawi for their French Immersion Program, this would mean that they would need a bus to Oakville Number Two. But for some students who currently take a bus to Odenawi, it will mean that they get to walk to their French Immersion school. And we do know that transportation can be a consideration for parents when they select the program. But I'll speak a little more about the process and benefits of moving the French Immersion Program in a moment. In scenario 14C, Odenawi comes in single-track English school. French Immersion is phased out in 202021 with Grade 7 and 8, and in 2122 with Grade 8 French Immersion only. This is because students who moved from Sunningdale to Odenawi when it opened will be in Grade 7 and 8 in those years, and we don't want to impact them again. So leaving those grades in the school allows those, or eliminates a transition for those kids who would otherwise be returning to Sunningdale. So Odenawi's Boundary is Areas 4 and 5 on the numbered map. Area 4, as you may be able to see, although it's quite small, cuts up a little bit into this, what we call the curve in Area Number 3. This is the main difference between scenarios 14B and 17. 14B has none of the curve, and 17 has all of the curve. So in scenario 14C, this is, cutting into this curve a little bit, is done to even out some of the enrollment pressure between Odenawi and Northeast Number Two. So we are getting as many students as possible walking to their English Track Odenawi school. In this scenario, Odenawi is a 100% walk-to-school, and students who live close to the school can attend their neighborhood school for their English program. All current English students are grandparented through to their graduation. For Sunningdale, their Boundaries expand to include Areas 1 and 6 on the map, as well as the area north of Area 2 and west of Area 4. Specifically, Area 6, that's the area just below Dundas, again, those students had moved from Sunningdale to Odenawi when it opened, and so those students would be grandfathered Grade 7 and 8 in Odenawi. The remaining Grades 2 to 6 would move to the new school with their peers. However, we did hear in the community feedback that some of those families would prefer to attend Sunningdale rather than move to Number 2, and that option would be available to them through our optional attendance process. Through optional attendance, those families could be offered a courtesy seat on the bus, given that we are recommending a partial implementation of that Boundary for September 2019, and therefore will have a bus going through that neighborhood to collect the Grade 2 French Immersion students going to Sunningdale.
You keep referring to Sunningdale, but I don't see it anywhere on
You keep referring to Sunningdale, but I don't see it anywhere on the map. And I'm a Milton trustee, I know I'm fairly familiar with Oakville, but I'm trying to figure out exactly where Sunningdale is. If you could just clarify that before we go further, please.
Sorry, the numbered areas map is showing the English boundaries, but I'll just flip back to the map on this slide. And you can see it's not far from River Oaks. I'm sorry, I've lost my spot here. So I was talking about, have I done River Oaks? No. River Oaks boundary includes the areas north of Burnhamthorpe between Neogawa and Trafalgar. That's the area north of Area Two, as well as south of Burnhamthorpe between Fourth Line and Neogawa. That's including Area One and all the area west of there. The areas east of Trafalgar and north of Dundas, that's Area Eight on the map. These students are currently at River Oaks and Mounds. Students are currently settled in those schools, and so we're recommending that we do not move those schools in order, those students in order to eliminate a transition for those students from their current school to Number Two and then to Number Three when Number Three opens. This was a priority of the BRC to have as few transitions as possible for students. However, the BRSC does recognize that some students and some families in this community through their feedback did desire to move. However, River Oaks is only approximately four kilometers from that neighborhood to the school. This is a seven-minute drive by car. These students are on the bus for 15 to 20 minutes to complete their route, and that is a very typical length of time that students are on the bus for an urban route. In scenario fourteen C, there are no changes to Mounds and Post Corners. And you'll see that we have a TBD or To Be Determined area, and that area was removed from the study. And now we'll look at the enrollment for those areas. Scenario fourteen C does offer the best balance of enrollment across the schools, in particular for the two North Oakville schools, Odenawi and Northeast Number Two. Although you'll see Number Two in the red by 2024, but we do have in our LTAP Northeast Number Three before then. Odenawi's numbers decline once the French immersion program is phased out of the school in 2022, and it fluctuates between the mid to high nine hundreds. And in Northeast Number Two, there is a viable French immersion program, opening with 240 students and growing to 370. And in Halton, we call a viable French immersion program a program that has a minimum of two classes per grade, and that's about 300 students at a minimum. River Oaks does not pass its total OTG capacity until 2026, and again, we anticipate Northeast Oakville Number Three by then. There are no changes to Mounds and Post Corners, so they stay in the yellow, managing with portables. And Sunningdale does remain underutilized in this scenario, dipping as low as 83%. Considering the criteria set out by the BRC, while some families are split in this scenario, that seems unavoidable in all of the scenarios. It does accomplish most of the criteria. French immersion is a viable program. It offers the best overall enrollment. The grandparenting clause keeps many families together, and it is the least number of moves possible for students. So the recommendation of the director is scenario fourteen C. The rationale for this recommendation is that it is a hybrid of two scenarios that were supported by the BRC, one at the public information meeting and one of the final recommended scenarios, fourteen B and seventeen respectively. It best meets the overall criteria identified by the BRC. As I said, it has the fewest possible student transitions. It provides an overall balance of enrollment across the schools in the study, particularly for Odenawi and Number Two. It provides some room for growth at all of the effective schools within the context of a new and rapidly growing community. And it does have a viable French immersion program. There's been significant consideration for the recommendation within scenario fourteen C to move the French immersion program from Odenawi to Northeast Number Two. And the rationale for this recommendation is that a larger boundary for French immersion creates a more viable program with a greater number of students in that program, such as the economies of scale for the acquisition of resources for the classroom and for the library, the consolidation of staffing resources, for example, French teachers with a full teaching assignment of French subjects, multiple classes of each grade that allows for flexibility and balance when building classes. The probability of combined classes across all the grades is reduced. Even with attrition out of the program, commonly seen as students enter junior in the intermediate grades, the grade cohort still maintains a minimum number of classes. And finally, the vitality of the French language and culture in the school is greater. We do have a process in the Halton Elementary Teachers Collective Agreement that allows for teachers to move with the program, and therefore, it will and could provide that continuity for students in the French immersion program. The French immersion resources that have been purchased for the program at Odenawi will move to Oakville Northeast Number Two, thereby eliminating any startup costs typically associated with a new program. Students in the FI track would move as a cohort to Northeast Oakville Number Two, and students in the English track would stay together as a cohort at Odenawi. While this splits some families who choose French immersion between Odenawi and Northeast Number Two, it does now allow for some families who are currently split between River Oaks and Mounds to now be together. Similarly, for transportation, some students who currently walk to their French immersion school will likely need transportation to Number Two, while others that need a bus to Odenawi for French immersion will now be able to walk to their home school. French immersion is an optional program, and transportation can be a consideration when families are selecting the program. It is the recommendation of the director that students within the English track be given first consideration for a walk-to-school. The implementation of the boundaries, the recommendation is a phased-in boundary. Given the circumstances of a new school being completed by September 2020, we're recommending for this September 2019 that Sunningdale, that the students entering Grade Two from Area Six and Area One would move to Sunningdale for September, as well as any new registrations from those areas. For Odenawi, currently, Odenawi Kindergarten is only open to the siblings of existing Odenawi students. And so we're recommending that we fill those remaining spots in kindergarten with students who live within the boundary as it's defined in scenario fourteen C. That's Areas Four and Five. The balance of the recommendation is to take effect when Northeast Oakville Number Two opens September 2020, with it opening as a K to seven school and growing to K to eight in its second year, and opening as a Grade Two to Six school French immersion and expanding by a grade each year. Odenawi would be an English K to eight school, and in September 2020, it would have seven and eight French immersion and phasing that out each year. All current English students in Odenawi would be grandparented, as well as the Grade Eight students in River Oaks. And at this point, we are open to questions or comments.
Director Miller?
Thank you, Chair Greventz. I just have a few comments to make. I first of all would like to thank all members of the Boundary Review Committee and all the community members, those that delegated this evening, those that spoke to us on the public meeting and have sent emails and so on. It is important philosophically for us as a board to hear from the community and work with them. I also want to thank our staff, who spent countless hours developing scenarios and presenting and going through these processes with the community. And of course, I especially want to thank trustees, Trustee Collard and Superintendent Pennyfather for chairing the Boundary Review Committee. I do have a few comments around this. For, most of the trustees around this board are aware of this, but not all. This is one of the most challenging situations boards face, is when they determine boundaries for new school builds. They're always difficult, and they're always challenging. And they're always difficult because not everybody in the community can get what they want. They can't get exactly where they want their children to go to school because of the many competing interests and the competing priorities around how the kids can go to, which students can go to which school. So there's always that tension and always that challenge. The Boundary Review Committee, Boundary Review Steering Committee, and ultimately, this board of trustees will have to wrestle with those same very tensions, knowing that some people will not be pleased with the outcome. Our job is to try to provide stable boundaries for the majority of students in a board. And the review committee, there's criteria developed, but the review committee identifies those criteria which are their priorities. And so we work towards those. We also have a particular challenge in Northeast Oakville and in one of our other communities in Milton, in where population growth is immense. It's growing very quickly. And I would argue, I would say, I would state categorically that it is impossible for this school board or any other school board to keep up with that growth in terms of our school builds. Very quickly, the way we build schools is we are driven, we have to make a case to the Ministry of Education, and they provide funding for us. We cannot make that case until people have arrived in those communities. Communities go up between eight and 15 months. It takes us three years to build a school, so we're always lagging behind because we can't get the funding and the approvals until people are there. So I think it's important for the community to understand that, because I've had emails, and I'm sure the trustees have had emails, for people talking about our planning processes. Our planning processes work, but there's a fundamental challenge in the system in that we can't get the money until people have arrived, so we can't have the school ready for when people arrive. Second, the next point I'd like to make is, and I'm not going to speak specifically about this particular boundary review, I will leave that to Superintendents Pennyfather and Ruddock, but I will speak philosophically about what we believe is a board. I know one of the, the scenario that's presented has talked about French immersion. This, we have a very robust and strong French immersion program in this board. And in fact, the uptake of French immersion in the Halton District School Board is as high as any board in the entire province, if not the highest in the province. We, there's, we have greater numbers of students that join our French immersion program than any others, any other boards, and they graduate from our system. So we support French immersion very strongly. However, it's important to note that we are an English board. Our core program is English. And we have to, and Superintendent Ruddock stated this, we believe that first consideration should be given to those in the English program because we are an English board. It was stated tonight, and I don't really want to address the delegations, but that some families may leave French immersion if we move. We've heard this before, but I believe strongly that the vast majority of parents choose French immersion because they want their children to learn French. They want a second, and in some cases, a third or fourth language for their children to have. And so therefore, if they are leaving French immersion simply because of location, I think we're questioning the French immersion program. So I believe most decide to choose French for their children, and most kids choose to remain in it because they want that second language, Canada's other official language. So the second one is, we do, the last point I would like to make is, we do try to minimize the number of moves for kids. We've heard this over and over again. This, many members of this board of trustees has been through, I shall say, dozens of boundary reviews in which children in our system have moved two, three, and in Milton, sometimes four or five times, they have moved schools because we've been unable to keep up with growth. And we have heard over and over and over again from those communities, please try to minimize the number of moves that our kids will have. That's what, one of the criteria that we look at here, and one of the main criteria, how can we support kids so that they have a fundamental home base and school so that they're not moving twice, three times? Having said that, we're aware that some students will have to move, and we know they will have to move. But if they have to move, let's make it one move, not two or three. So I just wanted to give the philosophical sign of underpinnings of where this recommendation comes for, comes from. I know the trustees are aware of it, but for the community and those in the gallery this evening and those perhaps watching online, where we come from on that. So I have no further comments, and I'll turn it over back to you, Chair Greventz.
Thank you. I do have a speaker's list, and we're going to start with Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. Through the chair to Superintendent Ruck. You mentioned that there would be family splitings in some situations. And I'm just wondering, are there optional attendant options to reduce the number of splits between the family members?
So you were talking about families who are split between an English track school and a French immersion track school.
I don't know. You just said that you, what you had said was that there are opportunities, that there will be families that are split.
Yes.
So in those situations, what I'm wondering, are there opportunities to keep those families together?
So in the scenario, only families who are choosing French immersion and leaving their home school would be split from each other. And optional attendance is a possibility. In terms of we have that process, there is an application process, and decisions are based on whether a school is designated open and has room within the program. So it's certainly a process they could access. Whether the optional attendance would be granted would be dependent on space.
Trustee Danielli.
Thank you. I've got a number of things. I'll try to go through them quickly. This is coming back to us March sixth. I would request in the March sixth package, could we please have some of the maps and some of the tables? Because I am finding it difficult to look at them online. I'm a visual learner, and I want to, this, boundaries are important. I want to make sure that I get this right when I cast my vote, so that's just a plea from me. Thank you. I've gone, I'm one of the ones that's gone through dozens of boundary reviews. And one thing that jumped out at me, if I'm understanding correctly, if I go back to your presentation, the BRC recommended scenarios, and then the BRSC took those scenarios and matched them together into what they felt was the best. Did the BRSC ever go back to the BRC with that, the recommendation that's here? Because I know for us, all the boundary reviews we've done, we've managed to have the consensus of the BRC, and then the BRSC brings it forward, and there's that consensus piece. I've never seen it where the BRSC has created a new scenario that has not gone back to the BRC. So I'm just wondering about the rationale behind that, please.
Through the chair to Trustee Danielli. It was in the final BRC meeting that the BRC created new scenarios. The planning department then was sent away to develop those scenarios. Because there wasn't another meeting scheduled for the BRC, the BRC didn't have an opportunity to review even the final scenarios that they recommended. And so the BRC didn't review the recommended scenario from the director, nor did they have an opportunity to see the final recommendations once they were completed. And that is because of the timing in the motion of the board to have a report back to you.
Through you, Chair Greventz, to Trustee Danielli. It hasn't, it has in fact happened before. It happened with the current boundaries for Darth Webb's High School in Oakville, where it was a slightly different scenario, varied slightly different from that boundary, and it never went back to the Boundary Review Committee. I would also say there was a, through a school closure process several years ago in Southeast Oakville, a new scenario was developed at the board table, and that went there. So it has happened in the past. I don't believe in Milton, but in Oakville, it's happened two or three times. Thanks.
Okay, sort of the, doesn't that happen? I've seen them the last 12 years. There's two. And that second one, the one that was developed at the board table, was overturned, and we had to go back to. But that, that being said, thank you very much for the explanation, Superintendent Ruddock. I do understand the position that you were in, giving the timing and everything else, and we need to go quickly. And so that's what I was looking, that explanation was what I was looking for from you. Thank you. I appreciate that very much. The only other concern I have, but I don't see a way around. The only other concern I have, but I don't see a way around it, is we're saying, we're bringing any three into the scenarios. And, and we don't know that the government will ever approve any three or when they might approve any three. So we might be back at the table. I don't see how you get around that because that's not under our control. But say that any threes will open 21, we, we really don't know that. That all depends that we create our capital priorities list and then they, they never give us the entire capital priorities list. So that, that is a fear for me as well. So I just needed to express that.
Through you Chair Cravens to Trustee Danielle. You're...
Order please, order please.
You're correct. We can't say that for certain. We're essentially looking at past patterns in terms of capital priorities. It is a new government. You know, this government could not be successful the next time around as well. So you're, you're absolutely correct. We can't say with absolute certainty, but all we can do is look at the patterns in, in terms of that. So you're right.
Just one final point. As someone who has done, I have lost count of how many boundaries. There's never an elegant solution. There's never one where you're able to go, yes, that's it. And everybody says absolutely. So I commend you on what was probably a very difficult task. And we'll have a very difficult decision on March 6th, but thank you for the work.
Trustee Rocha.
Through the Chair to Superintendent Radaq. A quick question. As far as the neighborhood right now that is east of Trafalgar, as of February, any new students are going to Falgerwood. In this scenario, are any new students still going to go to Falgerwood? Or will it be redirected to River Oaks in 2020?
Through the Chair to, to us, Trustee Rocha. The temporary redirect of students from that area to Falgerwood is indeed temporary for the, from starting now to, through to the opening of the new school in September 2020. At that time, there will be space again in River Oaks. The students who are in Falgerwood will stay in Falgerwood. We don't want an unnecessary move for those students. But new registrations coming in from that area would be directed to River Oaks.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you Chair. I fully believe in, support and cherish neighborhood schools. And in a perfect world, students would be able to walk to their neighborhood school regardless of their program choice. However, as Director Miller eloquently articulated, my own personal mantra, this is an English school board and French immersion is an optional program. And therefore I believe in and support the notion that English track students must first be accommodated in their walk to neighborhood school. Given my perfect world scenario, I would like to explore whether it is at all possible to preserve the French immersion track at Udenawi. And I wonder if looking at this accommodation issue from another perspective might help. Specifically, would looking at first creating boundaries for Northeast Two and then what the potential impact would be for Udenawi help with resolving the boundaries and, and seeing where the programs can be accommodated? And always with the view that walk to students would be going to their walk to school, neighborhood school. So we've looked at a, a lot of different scenarios. And this is really a question for the Planning Department to kind of play around with those numbers and maybe flip the perspective and see if, if that would change how we can address accommodation and whether we can facilitate both programs. But as I've said, for me, it's, the priority is that we accommodate English track students in their own walk to neighborhood school in the core program. Thank you.
Are, sorry, point of order there, Trustee Oliver. So are you asking them for something right now?
No, not right now. Sorry. Not right now. But if maybe planning could, could, could think about that a little bit and see if that makes sense and if it's feasible and if that can, if that shift in thinking can address some of the issues?
Well, I, we'll, we'll take a look at it. I think it might be embedded in one of the existing scenarios. I, I can't recall because when we looked at it, we, we did have that analysis of trying to ensure that the program at Udenawi remains status quo with a dual-track school. I think the ultimate issue comes back to having, providing enough accommodation relief to Udenawi and not have a school, i.e. Northeast Number Two, being severely under-enrolled. So those are the factors that we, you know, we looked at. But we'll take a look at it again to see whether or not we can accomplish that. But generally speaking, it's, it's the Udenawi catchment area that is so, so, so large in terms of the number of students being enrolled. There has to be changes and where that line is going to shift has been, we've identified locations and, and whatnot. But we'll take a look at it again.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you very much. So it's not actually me. I put my name on for Trustee Reynolds because she's not able to do that. So Trustee Reynolds, are you there somehow? Are you muted by chance? Okay, maybe we'll sort that out. Trustee Amos can, can you go?
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. When we went into this, we knew it was not going to be an easy process because we have more people who want to go to the schools in the north area than we have the accommodation for. And then we had the problem that the school was going to be delayed when we thought it was originally going to be opening in September 2019. And finally found out, yes, we're going to get a school, but it won't be till September 2020. I'd like to thank everyone who was on the Accommodation Committee because, or the Boundary Review Committee because everybody represented their communities very well and there was a lot of great discussion. But it still didn't, there was still a hard time trying to make everybody fit into the schools. And one of the things we went into was trying to provide some relief to, to Udenawi because it already has 18 portables, which is a school outside of a school. So, and in many of the scenarios, even the final ones, we're still not providing maybe as much relief as we could. But that's because we're trying to accommodate as many people as we can in the community. We've heard from the people who are in the community that are in the Eighth Line and the other side of Trafalgar and north of Dundas, that they would like to be going to a school up there as well. But when we look at all the scenarios, somebody is being, just can't fit because both schools would be so overcapacity. And even with 18 portables at both schools, we still wouldn't make, get everybody in there. So I don't know how to make everyone in the community happy because we can't, we can't get everybody in the schools. So, and this, so we have to, as a school board, focus on what our priorities are. So we are an English-based school board and we, and, and French immersion is an optional program. I would love to have, and we, we have to remember this core French in all of our English-based schools. So I understand the dilemma of the parents who are in French immersion because they want to stay at a school they're already at. So I don't think there is an elegant solution. I'm not sure. I've heard from many in the community with many of their concerns and it, it is a very difficult decision. But we have to go by our core values and we have to try and do the best we can for the community. And we've heard from some delegations tonight from their perspective. And I'm sure, I know that all trustees are going to be weighing in those perspectives. But we also have to try and do the best for the communities up there and at those schools. And I'm just saying, it's such a difficult position for all of us to make a decision. And, but we're trying to do the best we can. And by in two weeks' time when we have to vote, hopefully we'll have enough information that we can go forward and we'll either support this or we'll have other information that would allow us to look at another decision.
Thank you, Trustee Amos. Trustee Reynolds.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Super. Thank you. Through the Chair. We heard a delegation of this evening. And also we've received, or certainly I've received a lot of letters from constituents who were very concerned that they had purchased homes in, in, in the new area and that they would be, actually be going to the new public school. I'm most wondering if Superintendent Radaq could speak to how new home purchasers find out about local school assignments?
I'll, it's Darman Zella's, I was going to say Superintendent of Planning, sorry. General Manager of Planning, I'm, I'm, Colette has asked me, Superintendent Radaq has asked me to respond. Through you, Madam Chair. Typically, and just, and when I, I've heard those same comments this evening and over the last month or so. Generally speaking, when a homeowner buys a house, there are conditions in their purchase and sale agreement that basically outlines, I'm going to state it verbatim, that all prospective purchasers are advised that schools on sites designated for the Halton District, District School Board in the community are not guaranteed. Attendance at schools in the area yet to be constructed is not, also not guaranteed. And pupils may be accommodated in temporary facilities and/or be directed to schools outside of the area. So that is in all purchase and sale agreements and, and registered on title for all new home purchasers. Secondly, we also put a notice on, on signs outside development, new development that basically advises that students from this development may be accommodated in schools outside the community and that portables and/or porta pacts may be required for student accommodation. And be advised that the Halton District School Board has the right to redirect students based on accommodation. And if they want any further information, they contact the Planning Department. Now going back historically, any new areas have been identified on our school locator system. If homeowners or future purchasers are inputting addresses or they call us directly, we are, we're able to tell them what schools are, they are attending. As trustees are well aware, we did not get approval for this new school until January of 2018. So, and if there was any discussion or comments or questions posed by the community, we would have said, we've received funding for a new school. This is the new school. We would require a school boundary review. We wouldn't know if, if and when you're going to be attending that school. So I'm, I'm kind of disappointed to hear that the impression that the public got was that they would be going to the new school. Staff does not do that in my department. Our school locator does not identify those schools. And in fact, we encourage parents to phone the Planning Department to find out exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. May I follow up, please?
Yes.
So certainly I appreciate the, the information. And I'm, I'm most concerned, and I would be very curious as to where these constituents are receiving this information. And I'm wondering out loud, and perhaps I can pose it to the Director, maybe we can ask for suggestions from the community as to, you know, how to make that notification of, of, in new purchase agreements or in new building areas more prevalent? Or what else can we do to make the community more aware? I know I've certainly seen those signs in new community developments. But it, it just begs the question, what can we do more?
Director Miller.
Through you Chair Cravens to Trustee Reynolds. As General Manager Renzella said, it is in the purchase agreement for new homes in that area. I'm not, I'm, I mean, I have no issue with asking the community and, you know, if they have suggestions on how they can be better informed or around this. As, as General Manager Renzella said, they would have not got that information from us because we don't provide that information. Because we're very wary of, of the challenges we face around this. So to your first question, where would they've got that from? I don't know. I guess we'll have to ask them. But secondly, in making it more prominent, I guess, yeah, we could consult with the community. Part of me is where does our, our responsibility is to inform the Realtors and so on, which is, which is what we do. And I guess I'm, I'm kind of reaching here because I don't, I'm not sure where our responsibility lies in terms of when people purchase houses in an area, once we've provided the information. If they got the incorrect information or they didn't get the information because they didn't see it or whatever else, I'm not sure how we can be held responsible for that. So, and I'm not sure how we could address it. So I guess I'll leave it at that, but we can sit down with Planning and, and chat about this to see if there's a, a better way to do this or another, an additional way to do this.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question of clarification. One of our delegations said something about a vote. And I wanted to find out, when you are doing tabulation of responses, how are they handled? Is it done as a vote or can you walk us through the process?
When we, the, the online feedback form provides an, an information. It's not a vote. It's basically identifying the opinions expressed by the community. And again, there's no statistical validation of that feedback. It just kind of gives another tool in order to, to give to the BRC as well as the BRSC. So there is no vote. It's, you know, which one, and one of the questions, you know, scenario, X, Y, and Z, which one do you prefer? X. Which one you like the most is X. Which one you like the least, Y. And what are you neutral on? B type of thing. So that's all it is, is just kind of giving, but there's no statistical validation of that format.
Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. I think that my question may have been answered through Trustee Amos's question in that there's no statistical analysis of it. So in fact, one particular community could have largely been the participant in the survey. We don't know that for a fact.
Yes, we do. In the survey itself, 141 of the 250 respondents came from Udenawi. But of course, that's the school that's most impacted, so.
Right. Thank you. Follow-up question. Actually in another direction if I could. I wondered if General Manager Renzella could talk to us about the Upper Oak Community. We've heard tonight that it's growing out. Maybe there's been some delays, but it is starting to fill in. And we've heard that the community has to arrive first and there's a delay of up to three years through the Director as to when a, a school might be built to accommodate a community that gets built. We also heard tonight through at least one delegation that there's a large number of houses being provided for, to that community or being planned for that community. I wonder if you could talk to us about the houses and the anticipated deliverer of students per unit in that area? Would, is that something that we would know tonight?
Not off the top of our head. I'll, I'll refer that question to Senior Planner Choi, who does all the enrollment projections. But those numbers are built in to our, our projection modeling system. The exact details I don't have at the top of my head. And what we've done, just for your information, just, you know, with the fact that Udenawi was so robust in terms of its enrollment, we've increased our pupil yields in North Oakville because of, of that. Because we, we saw, and why we're here, is that we're getting more students than we, than what we originally anticipated. So we've recalibrated our modeling system to increase the number of the pupil yields moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is whether...
My question is whether you know what the net increase or decrease of bus students will be as a result of the recommended scenario? So are we busing more? If so, what's that magnitude? And if we're busing less generally, what's that magnitude?
I think, again, with the scenario, especially in the first little while, because of the grandparenting, it's gonna be really difficult to anticipate, but I would say it's almost a wash, because yes, the Udenawi is going to be a totally walk-to English track school, and now those students that are in the French immersion would be transported to the Northeast Oakville Number Two School between, in the English catchment area, or the Udenawi catchment area right now, east or west of Sixth Line. So there may be, it may be equal, we'd have to take a look at the numbers.
Just for decision-making purposes, is it possible to get some indication of that for the next meeting? I think it speaks to some of the points that other trustees have made around walkable schools and costs of transportation and that sort of thing. So I'd be really interested in having a deeper understanding of that.
Yes, we'll do that, kind of do a comparison between the current situation and the implementation of 14C.
Okay, so seeing no more speakers on the list, I have a question, and that is about our policy within the board crossing major roads. So Trafalgar, Sixth Line, in Burlington, it would be Walkers, Appleby, Dundas. Do we have a custom or a policy about whether we actually always transport across those for elementary or not?
Excellent question. Typically, when we're looking at, and HSTS looks at the situation, there's a couple of variables with respect to having students cross major roads, arterials. First of all, whether or not it's greater than four lanes is one aspect. Does it have a traffic light in which students can cross safely? But most importantly, whether or not there is a crossing guard. And the town and municipalities, you know, in some cases do not put crossing guards in. A good example, I believe, is Trafalgar Road because of the volume and number of lanes of traffic, and as well as Dundas Street. So those are two good examples of municipalities not wanting to do that. So in terms of Trafalgar Road, highly unlikely that any of that will take place, and those students will likely be bused moving forward. Right now, Sixth Line is not, it's still a kind of semi-rural road, there's no sidewalks, it's, you know, a couple lanes, they haven't expanded it, so we'll have to review that moving forward. But at this point in time, in talking to HSTS, until that roadway and intersections are improved upon, those students west of Sixth Line would be transported to Northeast Oakville Number Two.
Okay, thank you very much. There are no more speakers on the speakers list, so we will see you again in two weeks. Thank you so much. We are now up to 522, Bylaw Review, Report 19029 on page 43 of the Board Package. Trustee Colette, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you. In 2018, the Board revised the bylaws for the Halton District School Board, and in that process, we had a review done by Miller Thompson and Associates, as well as by a parliamentarian, which recommended that three of our bylaws become policies and/or procedures of the governance variety, which we didn't currently have at the Board at the time. And so with, given that recommendation, and in concert with the fact that we have decided to implement a change to our committee structure, the Committee of the Whole Board, I'm bringing forward this motion that we send the three bylaws to Miller Thompson and Associates to have them rewritten as policies and/or procedures, and for them to come back to Committee of the Whole, so that we can have further conversation as to any changes we want to make to those new policies and/or procedures before they become part of our policy and procedure collection, I guess, for lack of a better word. Because this is a timely issue that we would probably like to get done more quickly than not, I would like to suggest that we suspend the rules to vote on this tonight, so that Miller Thompson and Associates can get to work at it that much more quickly. So I would like to make that motion.
Okay, so you're making a motion to suspend the rules. Okay, so we'll deal with that, and then if it passes, then we will move to continue discussion on it as a debate. Okay, so I see that Trustee Amos is on the list, I'm just gonna suspend that list for the moment. Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any, I need a seconder for suspending the rules. Trustee Rocha, thank you very much. Is there any discussion at all on suspending the rules this evening? Seeing none? Okay, so we'll vote on that. All those in favor of suspending the rules? We're awaiting your vote, Trustee Reynolds. She might have gotten disconnected. Okay, I'm going to end the voting. So that passes, but not unanimously. I'll give a moment for Manager Gromaker to note that. Okay, so we are going to deal with it this evening, I'm going to go back to the speakers' list that was started. Okay, Trustee Amos?
Thank you. I would like to request that the delegation part of this recommendation be referred back to Committee of the Whole. I do not believe we've actually had a discussion on it since it was first implemented with the change, and I would, and I believe that with three new trustees who haven't had the opportunity to look at this, that there could be some potential changes that would be better served if they were done before they went to Miller Thompson to be rewritten, because I think that it would be of value for us all to revisit it, because I know I have some concern about the delegation bylaw, and I think that we need to have that discussion first.
So just for clarification, you'd like to make a motion to, I'm gonna read in the motion, because I haven't done that, and then you want to make a motion to amend it, to remove the delegation part, and then you'd like to make potentially another motion to refer to Committee of the Whole?
To refer to Committee of the Whole.
Okay, just clarifying. Okay, so I'm gonna read the motion as it's written, that we were given. Okay, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board forward the revised draft committees of the Board bylaw, as well as the current delegations and naming schools bylaws to Miller Thompson for review and revision in context of the Board's new policy and procedure format, with revisions returning to the Committee of the Whole in April 2019. You're moving that? Okay, great, and seconded by Vice Chair O'Harrison, thank you very much. Okay, so we have now a motion, I'm just gonna reset the...
May I speak to the motion before we take any amendments?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to respond to your concern through the Chair, Trustee Amos. Before it would ever become an actual policy of the Board, it would be reviewed by Committee of the Whole. We are merely asking Miller Thompson to look at the format of it and produce a document that we would then look to amend or add it as required. It's almost a chicken-and-the-egg circumstance. Either way, the delegation bylaw or policy and procedure would have to be reviewed by trustees prior to it becoming a policy and procedure. So I don't really see the benefit of removing the delegation bylaw from the package, because in either case, it needs to be reviewed, and I believe it would be more effective use of time of Miller Thompson to do it in one package, rather than do two and then do a third one later. I am very aware of the costs that we have in order to produce these documents.
Trustee Amos?
Thank you. I actually asked a question earlier, whether there would be an additional cost if we did it separately, and I was told no, it'd be based on ours, not as a combined piece. So, and I just have a real concern that if we totally revamp the delegation bylaw, that it could potentially negate all the work that the lawyer would do. So that's why I feel it's more important that we actually have a look at it first. And they could go forward with the naming schools and the Committee of the Board's bylaws to reformat those, and after everyone here has had that opportunity to look at the delegation bylaw, then I believe then it would be the appropriate time to send it to Miller Thompson.
Trustee Gray?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions or comments to make at this time. There was a discussion, I believe, at the last Board meeting, perhaps, where we talked about what is it that we want as a Board of Trustees in terms of what needs to be going to legal? So I think that that's a discussion that may be coming up soon, are we expecting to put everything before legal for opinion? I think I'm hearing, if I'm understanding correctly, that this is something that's the chicken and the egg, and I'm seeing it that maybe something, like maybe we need to work with it as a group before we take it for formatting, maybe it needed to be in that direction. And the third comment that I have is, is it possible that, you know, what we might have as a delegation policy might need to change once the information or government guidelines come out around PARs?
Different policy.
Different policy, but we had our delegation policy affected by the last PAR, so maybe you could provide clarification. I just, those are the questions I have swirling on my...
I'm happy to provide clarification. The PAR guidelines have not yet come out from the provincial government. We are given to believe that they may come out this spring, but we don't know for certain. Once the new PAR guidelines are coming out, then we have to amend the PAR policy, which would be done by staff and then brought forward to trustees. And I believe that any changes to the PAR guidelines, we reflected in the PAR guidelines, and they would not impact the delegation guidelines at all. It's not, it is not the delegation policy that was at issue, it was the PAR policy that was at issue. And so knowing that the PAR policy would have to be aligned with the ministry guidelines, the changes would be made in that policy. Okay, thank you.
Okay, in terms of procedure, is there a motion to amend? Okay, you have motion to amend to remove the delegations. So you want to remove the words "as well as the current delegations"? So it would be, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board forward the revised draft committees of the Board bylaw and naming schools bylaws to Miller Thompson, et cetera, et cetera? Okay. So do we have a second for that amendment? Trustee Gray? Okay, so I'm just resetting that. Is there any discussion on the amendment of removing those words? All those in favor of the amendment? Was there, have people made a mistake, I can cancel and redo?
Yeah.
Okay, I shall cancel that.
Can you just read the amendment again, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
So the amendment is removing the words in the second line, that is, "as well as the current delegations." So it would be, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board forward the revised draft committees of the Board bylaw and naming schools bylaws to Miller Thompson for review and revision in context of the Board's new policy and procedure format, with revisions returning to the Committee of the Whole, April 2019.
Point of order?
Yep.
Or clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Why would we remove "as well as the current"? The naming schools bylaw is current.
Okay, it's just delegations, thank you very much for pointing that out. So I will say that again. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board forward the revised draft committees of the Board bylaw, as well as the current naming schools bylaw? I guess I need to take off, we will assume that we'll take off the S for grammatical, to Miller Thompson for review and revision in context of the Board's new policy and procedure format, with revisions returning to Committee of the Whole in April 2019. Okay, so that is what, we're voting on that amendment. If this passes, we'll have to vote on the whole thing again, but just, so on the amendment. Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment of removing the word "delegations"? Okay, that passes, but not unanimously. Manager Gromaker?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we now have to, we're now going back to the main motion. So the main motion, I'm going to say it again, is be it resolved that the Halton District School Board forward the revised draft committees of the Board bylaw, as well as the current naming schools bylaw, to Miller Thompson for review and revision in context of the Board's new policy and procedure format, with revisions returning to Committee of the Whole in April 2019. So is there any more discussion on? Okay. Well, actually, we've already moved it, we're just back into the motion again, so we've kind of nested in, so we're all good. Okay, so, but is there any more discussion on this particular motion? Okay, so we'll vote on it then? So I'm looking for it. Okay, we just have a little technical.
You're seeking clarification, Trustee Rocha?
Yes. Okay, so this is for actually passing the motion itself as amended.
Okay.
Okay, the other, the last vote was just removing the word "delegations" from the motion. Now we have... Now we have to go back to vote on the main motion, the whole gist of the motion as amended. All those in favor of this motion? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we have no information items this evening, right? Yeah. Oh, there's still speakers? Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Trustee Rocha? That was about the clarification. Trustee Collard?
Thank you. I would like to request that the delegation bylaw be placed on the next committee of the whole agenda.
Okay, so should we refer to committee then? Yep, we shall. So you have a move to, move it to committee? You have a second to move it to, refer to committee?
Exactly.
Yep. So, hence I looked in your direction. Is there any further, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clear the current speakers. Okay, are there any speakers to referring to committee? Seeing none? Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That's going off to committee. Okay, committee of the whole. Now, we have no information items this evening. Are there any notices of motion this evening? Okay, actually, yeah, okay, next is the director's report.
You chaired events. I have three updates for you. The first is I'm going to refer to Superintendent Reddick on the immunization slash suspension situation.
It's through the chair to trustees. As you know, we currently have secondary students out on suspensions for, if they have an incomplete immunization record. I'm happy to say we're down to 18 students in our system. And we're working with public health and our secondary principals to see if there are any students that are experiencing barriers to getting their immunization record updated and getting them off the suspension list. So we're hoping to see that number to continue to come down. It's day nine of the suspension, and the suspension will run until March 7th, times out at that point. Our grade three students, our students born in 2010, also received suspension letters this week. They will be suspended if their immunization record continues to be incomplete, March 18th to April 12th. We have 455 grade three students who were given that suspension notice. That has come down a little bit. It used to be over 600. But we are, again, reminding principals to work with families, to encourage them to get their immunization record resolved before the start of the suspension date. So we stop about three weeks prior to that date. Thank you.
Trustee Amos?
Thank you, and thank you for that information. Is there any geographic polarization or specific groupings of students in specific areas that, or is it sort of spread over Hallton?
Through the chair to trustee Amos? No, it is all over Hallton. There seems to be no necessary rhyme or reason to those numbers.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We have one more question, I believe, from vice chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, do those suspensions go into the OSR of those students?
Through the chair to trustee Al Harrison? No, they do not, nor do they get recorded in our system as a suspension. They're recorded in Trillium as what we call a G-Day with an explanation written beside it that it is a suspension issued by the Health Department. The letters are not generated by our system, the HIT system. They're letters that are written by the Health Department. They do not reside in the OSR.
Trustee Amos?
Thank you. Another thought is you said that the expansion, the expulsions, the suspensions will expire at March the 6th, 5th? So does that mean if they have their, they still haven't got their immunization, they're allowed back in school, or is it start again?
So through the chair to trustee Amos, that is the decision of the chief medical officer. In my vast experience of one year, the suspension was not extended beyond the 20-day period. That decision was made in consultation with the superintendent, with the student health portfolio in Hallton Catholic and myself, and we all agreed that we preferred not to have the extension period extended. So whether that will be the same decision this time round will be up to the chief medical officer.
So basically, we're not, he's not going to try and enforce the inoculations after that point? It's, if they don't want it, they're not going to do it?
That's what happened last year. Yeah.
Thank you. The second item is, I was to bring a report this evening on an update on a new administration center for the HDSB. There's no report, as you've noticed in your package. There's been some delay in getting some information and some concepts and stuff. So we're anticipating the end of March to bring some kind of report to the board. The last thing is, February 14th last week was the annual general meeting for the Center for Skills and Development. That was the first meeting, and this is good news for the center and good news for the Hallton District School Board. That was the first annual general meeting in the history of the Center for Skills and Development in which the HDSB was not the owner, so to speak, of the center. On February 13th, myself, associate director David Bog, and trustee Leah Reynolds submitted letters of resignation and all, and the relationship between the Hallton District School Board and the Center for Skills and Development was, I hesitate to use severed because that's a pejorative word, but it's, it's not a pejorative situation at all. This is a sign that the center is ready to move on and has been ready for some time, is moving on, and they can work completely independently with us. Having said that, we will continue to forge links with the center because they do great work and they do work that complements the HDSB. But I think it's good news for the center and congratulations to them for this step. So that's it for my report.
Thank you, Director Miller. So we're onto communications from the chair, and I want to point out the, just the two items that are under that heading, a letter from another board as well as a report about the Public Education Symposium put on by OSPA. And I just wanted to bring up a topic with regards to the February 6th announcement regarding the new autism program or funding model that the current government is planning to implement. And I'm suggesting that it's going to cause a problem. I would almost use the word crisis in our board as it is supposed to be implemented April the 1st. And this is going to dramatically increase the number of special education students in our board. We already spend over $20 million more a year on special education than is allocated by the ministry. Whereas, we have students that are, well, we have, there are children in our region that are either not currently attending our schools because they have very intense therapy or they are attending very part-time. Those students will become students full-time, potentially at our schools, and not have the appropriate supports available. And I'm suggesting that we write a letter to both Minister McLeod and Minister Thompson to state that this is an issue and that they need to provide us with more information and more funding if this is going to end up in our hands. So I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions on that. I would actually, so is anybody interested in having a letter written on behalf of our board? Trustee Daniele?
I would support that. I think you brought up some very good points, and I don't think, I honestly don't think we'll see anything come of it, but I think it's important to be on record with the concerns and hope for the best.
May I, oh, may I put a motion forward to write a letter, letter to the ministers copying OSPA as well as our local MPPs? You'll second that? Thank you, trustee Daniele. And is there any other discussion or points that should be?
Should we suspend our rules?
We'll do that. Okay, so we'll need a motion, well, are you making a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I am.
Seconded by trustee Gray. It's in there now? Okay. Any discussion on suspending the rules? I don't see anything. All those in favor of suspending the rules to deal with this? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So now, are there any other comments with regards to the letter itself? Okay, so we'll set up the vote for that. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I will get working on that. And I will appreciate, I will also be reaching out to trustees for input and, well, for input. Thank you very much. Okay, are there any committee reports? Oops, hold on a second. Are there any committee reports this evening? Okay, there's weirdness happening. Okay, trust, oh, trustee Amos?
Thank you. Today was the Hallton Learning Foundation Annual General Meeting. I'd like to say a special thank you to trustee Gray, who has done great work with Hallton Learning Foundation, and I know she will continue in the background to be involved. But there were four people who are retiring this year, two individuals who had been there for over six years, who have done a lot of work and really helped the Hallton Learning Foundation along. And I understand that the keynote, I unfortunately had to miss it, but was very inspirational. And I just wanted to let you know that they're going to be doing their strategic planning for the next bunch of years, I think in May, and we'll be looking forward, and I'll bring you more information after that happens.
Hey, thank you. Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of participating in the school year calendar committee. We met February 14th. Consisted of a number of stakeholders representing elementary, secondary panels. We had parents there and was headed by associate director Bog. I just wanted to let people know, the public certainly, that discussions around that table were very excellent. They focused on a calendar that would promote student achievement and well-being, was certainly that before French of the discussion. The key highlights, there were, were regarding the seven professional activity days. Certainly, there was good consensus on three of them, and I believe four are going back to the admin council for review. I think the considerations that were discussed around the table, just to give you a flavor, were whether there should be a consideration for rear organization date in September, whether to attach a PD day, PA day to a long weekend. We certainly discussed the federal election date in October, and certainly an issue came up in April about having four, sorry, three, four-day school weeks. So at this moment, I believe this is, falls into the hands of our admin council and a consultation with the Hallton Catholic District School Board, and we'll look forward to it coming back to our board. Oh, and I should just say that the starting point of the discussions focused on the previous school year calendar. So that was the basis of the discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard?
Thank you. I'd just like to remind trustees at the Ontario Public School Board Association Board of Directors meeting is this weekend, starting Friday and going over onto Saturday. And I had forwarded the agenda package to all trustees. If you have any comments or questions that you wish me to find out more information about, please do let me know. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver?
Thank you. Through your chair, I have an update on the Special Education Advisory Committee. The first meeting of that committee took place earlier this month. Trustee Shadleworth and I are the designated trustee representatives, and trustee Garretts and vice chair Al Harrison are the alternates. We have a number of new representatives from the community agencies as well as community members at large, which is great. It's great to get some new perspective and new representation. At that meeting, we went over the objectives of the committee, what the mandate is, and got acquainted with each other so that we're ready to get to work at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice chair Al Harrison?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. There was a committee of the whole meeting last Wednesday, I believe. And now that we've moved to the once-a-month format, our agendas are getting a bit longer. So hopefully, we can continue the process of discerning where our priorities lie and when we need to move certain things on to the agenda. So on that note, the next one is scheduled for March 27th, and that's after March break. And on that, so far, for that agenda, we have revisiting striking committee process, school bus cancellation policy, perhaps some budget, student leadership policy, and the newly added delegation bylaw. So if trustees are aware of any other urgent thing from our priority list, if you could let me know in the next couple of days, that would be great, and we'll see how we can structure that to make it all work. After that, April 10th is our next meeting, and we'll be getting into budget season around then. So it'll be an interesting time. Thanks.
Thank you for all those committee reports. And just a reminder that there is the ability to submit a report before the package goes due, so you don't have to give a verbal report. Okay, so the next is, oh, the next is a motion to extend? May I please have a motion to extend? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Garretts, actually.
Pardon me, Madam Chair, but doesn't the length of the extension need to be in the motion?
Point of debate, what, how long do you think that we should have? It was trustee Gray, right? No, was it trustee Gray? Yeah, and trustee Garretts, the two Cs?
I would suggest five minutes.
You would suggest five minutes?
Just these comments and questions.
Okay. Anybody else have a suggestion? A 10 maximum? Okay. So, do we have a, do we have a consensus? So, do we have a, do we have a consensus of 10 maximum around the table?
Hang on.
Oh?
Excuse, as Chair Gerbence, we have to go back into private, and that has to be considered in the extension. And we have, at least, we've, we've got to carry on that conversation that we were in. Plus, we have two other items that might generate some questions from trustees. So, I think you're looking at more than five or 10 minutes. Yeah. It's, we can be quick. Two guys that ask us all the questions.
Point of clarification, do you have to come out of private session to move a motion to then? Why you have to include it?
Point of order. The concern that's being raised by the student trustee is because we know that he will have to leave the room for the director's report, and his ride home will be remaining in the room, so...
Okay.
Okay. Because that's, that's a concern, that the student trustee would be sitting waiting in the other room for his ride home.
To a maximum, 45 minutes? We'll cut it in the center? Up to a maximum of 45 minutes? So, that, I encourage all trustees to be concise in their comments and questions. Okay, so, we're going to vote. I don't see it next. Oh, I think something happens. There we go. All those in favor of a 45-minute extension? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're on to trustee questions and comments. Okay, trustee Shuttleworth.
All right, through you, Chair, to Superintendent Puchetti. I'm just wondering where things stand with Nelson.
Through Vice Chair L Harrison, or rather Chair Gerbence, and to the trustee, where do things stand? Well, at this point, we are still in the, we are still providing information to the ministry. We met with him on February 14th, Valentine's Day. There were no chocolates. And they did ask us for some additional information. It was a good meeting because I think it allowed us to explain with the aid of the floor, floor plans in more detail, some of the complexity of the project in terms of sequencing and so on. So, it was good. There was a good representation of ministry staff there, including people from the finance department. So, I think that, that was a very positive thing to happen. So, we're providing that information, and we will probably need to just circle back to them to see if they are in agreement, or if they have any other questions from that.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Garretts.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to Superintendent Puchetti. Could you please give us an update on the new high school in South Milton, please?
Certainly. So, Southwest Milton, we've been working with the architect and the subconsultants to do some design revisions. And again, I want to stress that we're, we're looking at these revisions so that there is minimal impact on the scope and program of the building, but tweaking certain things, making substitutions to find some cost reductions. We have reduced the building design slightly in square footage. Again, no impact on student program, just to tighten it up a little bit, to see if we can affect some savings. It is, the revisions, the revised design is going to the cost consultant, and we expect to submit a revised ATP form, which is the form we have to submit to the ministry with the cost estimate by the end of March, maybe even a little bit sooner than that, so that we can get approval to go to tender with the project.
Okay. Seeing no more questions and comments. We have exhausted our agenda, so we now need to rise into private. Reconvene into private. Trustee Amos is moving that. Trustee Gray is seconding that. Is there any discussion on that at all? Seeing none. All those in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. We are now in private session.